Good morning. Welcome to the April fifteenth Board Supervisors meeting, regular business roll call please.
Schwartz.
Here.
Brand.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Curtinback.
Here.
Paul.
Here. Please join in a moment of silence to reflect on today's. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda received, is proposed or amended.
Second.
You want to reserve?
The amendment, I was gonna say the suggester, depending on what the others thought too, but since the item nine is the letter of opposition to Governor Reynolds and already action was taken on that last Friday, so it's really kind of a moot point at this point to have discussion on that. If we wish to have further discussion, maybe at a phone meeting or other avenues.
I, this is Chris, I was gonna propose maybe we amend that to instead send a letter to Secretary of State Paul Pape as their drafting guidance.
The same, the same type of letter that we talked about.
Would it be, would it be the same verbiage or would it be?
Uh, no, it would be a different verbiage. But we could have, I mean, it'd be nice to have a little bit of discussion on it at least.
Yeah. Can we, can we have discussion of item even if we're not going to intend to send a letter?
I was gonna say this sounds like a different agenda. I don't think it would be you list to either have it on next week's regular meeting or otherwise to set a special meeting of notice. I don't, I don't see this as an emergency item.
Perhaps, Chris, maybe we, we draft a letter to Paul Pape and place it on next week's agenda for discussion.
Okay.
Does that work?
Okay, yeah. Unless he comes up with guidance before then, but who knows?
Yeah.
Just in my push, I think that the accountability and transparency side of it and giving others an opportunity to speak, it just, IPID would be, yeah, thinking probably.
Alright, so.
With that amendment?
With the amendment of removing ni- number nine. All in favor say aye.
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 Close same sign, motion carries. Item number two, public comments for anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda, either in the room or online. Seeing none, presentation, waste, electronic recycling event, John.
Thank you supervisors for allowing me to come in and do a little bit of an advertisement here for our household hazardous waste and collection event. Uh, one of our ads is up right here, so it kind of gives you an idea of what we're doing. Um, so our event is actually gonna be May third. This is an annual event that we've been doing since 2014, so this is our fifteenth year of doing this. Over that time, what we do is for this event, it's a, it's from nine to twelve thirty. We, we take residents of Blackhawk County by appointment only, so that we're able to take their household hazardous waste, electronic waste. Household hazardous waste could consist of stains, pesticides, herbicides, cleaners, a lot of the corrosive kind of cleaners that you're doing, drain cleaner, stuff like that. We're looking at, um, and then most items that have, electronic items that have words to them. Some of the things that we don't, it's easier to kind of say that than necessarily just kind of anything. Um, things that we don't accept during this event is gonna be paint. What we do is we encourage people to dry paint out and once it's solid, they can go ahead and just throw that away and put it in the regular trash. Appliances is something we don't take, there's already a system. Basically what we're trying to do is take stuff that's not readily available or can get disposed of within Blackhawk County, so that's kind of what we're working on right here. Appliances you get rid of almost any time as well. We don't take explosives at this event, is the other one. And then fertilizers, that's usually another one that we get quite a bit. If it's a weed and feed, we'll take it because it has a herbicide into it, but if it's just a fertilizer, it's just, for the most part, just trash. So those are kind of the big ones that we have. For an exclusive list, if you go to our website at wastetrack.org on the front page, there'll be a link that goes right to the spring event, which will give you a flyer. We have a nice green flyer. There's one posted out by the front door as you're, as you're kind of leaving here, as well as throughout the community, so you'll see those. Just a little bit of information on this is that we serve about six hundred households within a five hour period. Uh, one reason, one of the questions I get is quite a bit is just, oh, why do we have reservations? The whole point of the reservation or the time slot is so we can meter people through. We found out that in the past, we'd have like two or three, uh, people would be waiting two or three hours. We really couldn't schedule our volunteers in a timely manner, so sometimes the volunteers weren't leaving at the same time. So by scheduling, that was the nice thing that came out of COVID, we started scheduling and it kind of allowed us to meter people through, so that we can be more consistent on, on, more respectable for everybody's time, but the business as well as for the volunteers. And just a nice little contact list as well, so we can follow back up on some of those waste diversion opportunities that we have. Uh, again, just a reminder, e-waste is accepted at the Cedar Falls Transfer Station year round, so if you have electronics, no need to set up for this, you can drop that off at Cedar Falls. That's something we're kind of working on as a commission to kind of make larger opportunities. Here's a video actually from our last fall event over at Cedar Falls to kind of give you an idea of the, the amount of traffic that we get. This isn't all volunteer events, everybody that's there is all volunteers. We usually about forty to fifty volunteers and a little bit, you're gonna see a bunch of people in a bunch of vests right there. Those are all volunteers. Without volunteers, this event will not happen. I get a little nervous every time because right now I only have fifteen volunteers and so usually they all kind of come knocking that last week and it always kind of scares me, but somehow the community does it. I prefer not to have that, so if somebody is available on the third and would like to do some volunteer time, whether on the goodness of our heart or whether they have some other requirements for volunteer time, feel free to contact us at wastetrack.org. Some of the stats that we have on this is, like I said, we deal about six hundred households in the, in the timeframe. As you can see, we have the semi truck and the two milk trucks. We usually fill both of those, all those up with household hazardous waste. Um, then we also do about seventeen thousand pounds of electronics at this event, which equates to about fifty pallets of, of electronics. Uh, it's actually, you can kind of see those off on the right-hand side of the screen as the time kind of progresses. Uh, the event actually lasts for us, we were there by six o'clock. We usually don't leave until about six thirty or, or three thirty or four o'clock in the afternoon, even though we're done by that one o'clock timeframe. Uh, so in the fifteen, in the fifteen years that we've done here, we've actually collected over one point two million pounds of electronics, so that's pretty good. So that's kind of been in a nutshell, is there any questions?
Do you get many items, John, that people bring and you have to turn them away?
Uh, normally we try to keep them, we'll, we'll, I try not to say that, but we'll usually kind of keep them in, if there's a line, then we'll kind of turn them away and have them come back when, usually there's some slots towards the end or something like that, then we can do it. Again, we're trying to be respectful of those that are actually making the appointment. If there's space, we'll do it, if not, we'll turn them away and kind of come, and they'll have to come back.
And John, this event's back in Cedar Falls again?
Uh, this one's actually the, the, historically, the one in the, in the spring is in Watawoo and the one in the fall is in Cedar Falls.
Waste Water Plan.
What's that? Yep, the Waste Water Treatment Plant, yep. And.
Batteries, old batteries, car batteries?
Yep, we'll take lead acid batteries and I encourage people to take those to, uh, the auto, like the auto stores or like Aline Auto or one of the metal places, because if there is value to that, if they want to bring it up, drop it off at us, that's fine. We'll go ahead and take the auto batteries, lithium ion batteries, recyclable, rechargeable batteries, those are something we'll take as well. That's an option that we have, that's also an option you can do at Cedar Falls Transfer Station and that's another one you have options at like Best Buy, Home Depot, Menards. One of the large box stores have those ability, abilities to take those rechargeable batteries as well. We take a little bit larger gamut of the electronics, so we're taking more like extension cords, we're taking Christmas lights, it's always the one, the fun one that's kind of in there. Uh, and then, so I, I try to veer away from appliances, small kitchen appliances. When I talk about that, it's like a little toaster oven or a toaster or like an air fryer, whereas it's not a microwave, a microwave is actually an appliance that you can go to either to Lantil or go to Transfer Station or through one of the city programs as an appliance.
How about steel, like no wheelbarrow?
Nope, all steel, we don't take any of that, so that's gonna go to your notice.
Okay.
So we try to stick to the household hazardous waste and, and.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We'll see on third.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In line?
Yeah.
In line.
Yeah. Please let me run.
Alright. Item four, claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board Supervisors approves expenditures. As the county auditor, I'll be authorized in direct to issue payment against various settlements as, such claims of the law.
Alright, good morning Board. Our total bill payment today is eight hundred fifty-six thousand forty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Of that, seven thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-six cents is from the sixty forty fund. We are making some capital payments today. Um, paying for a single axle dump truck from Don's Truck Sales. That amount is two hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars. And we're making a payment to Peter's Construction for the courthouse of fifty-nine thousand two twenty-two thirty-six. Modus, again, that will be for the HVAC improvements, ten thousand one hundred twelve dollars. Envision, we've got three payments into them of about ten thousand dollars total. I think that is most of the large payments today. Everything appears to be in order.
Show a question on the manual checklist. We had the payment for the insurance stop loss. Is that once a year, once a quarter, once a month on that, you know?
I'm, is it a premium? I don't have the manual list in front of me.
Wow. It's a specific stop loss, eighty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-two.
I guess that's a monthly premium. I was looking for Tim, but he's not out here. I, I think we pay all those monthly.
Okay, and I seen there was a prescription, I didn't know if both of those were, because I didn't see them in the months past, I was just kind of wondering if it was just a once a year thing or if it's a quarterly there.
Uh, we'll have to get back to you.
Can you follow up?
What's that?
I can follow up.
Okay.
Alright, any additional questions? This is a resolution, roll call please.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Brand.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item five, receive product update from department heads.
Good morning Board, Rory Givney, Facilities Director. Uh, just wanted to give a quick update on some of our various projects that we have going on uh, here at the courthouse with the Treasurers Department. Uh, things are going pretty smoothly. Uh, right now, we just wrapped up framing and drywalling. Uh, we'll be working on ceiling grid, painting here the rest of this month. Um, looking at casework also by the end of the month. Uh, and then completion for that project, we're still looking at the end of May. Uh, the furniture will probably be our last and final item. Uh, and as long as everything goes okay with that, we should be able to get the Treasurers uh, back up into their department first of June. So I'm sure they're getting excited about that.
Rory, how soon do you see a bid for the furniture for that area coming in?
Say that again.
How soon do you see the bid for the furniture?
Uh, for the treasure, that's already, that's already done. Yep, yep. The, the only bid that we'll have left will be for Pinecrest facility.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, so the IT server room, uh, that is actually on a hold right now as the recorder is doing some scanning. Uh, so they're utilizing that space, I believe they may have another week or so left on that. Um, then we'll get back started on the, on the server room. Uh, we have a completion date of, uh, looks like about mid-June on that, so. As soon as they're done with that scanning, we'll start getting, uh, the walls put up and, uh, start proceeding with that project, so. Over at the VA, uh, that's really starting to take shape. Uh, I know Yolando showed a picture, uh, last week, but we do have the metal roof on, we have the windows in, all the interior framing is complete. Uh, we're working on, uh, this week, we'll be working on sheet rocking. Uh, everything goes as planned. Uh, we're looking at, uh, the first of July to get those folks into that building. And then that will open up, uh, the new clinic space for us to get started over there. Uh, which, uh, that'll happen soon after that. Um, right now, as of yesterday, we're starting to move furniture out of the first floor of the Pinecrest facility, first floor and the second floor annex, uh, to allow them to start on that portion of the project. Uh, in fact, they've actually started on it. Um, we're looking at that taking us up till the first of September to get that portion done. Uh, once that's complete, uh, then we'll be able to get the health department moved down to that first floor and then the next phase will then be the clinic. We don't have an end date on the clinic yet, uh, but as soon as I do, I will get that to you. But as of right now, uh, things are going fairly good. We don't have any unexpected surprises, other than, uh, I think I had mentioned the sewer line over at the VA Center. Uh, we're still waiting for that completed change order to get that in front of you folks, but, um, so far, everything is going fairly well. So just want to say thank you to, our team has really been putting a lot of work into this, working with the contractors and, and the different entities that are involved and it's making for a, uh, a much smoother process, so.
The things you moved yesterday then, where were you moving?
Uh, we're actually utilizing the chapel right now as a staging area. Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. So yeah, the chapel will be out of service probably for the remainder of this project, uh, because it does serve as a, a nice space to be able to call our staging, uh, spot for furniture. For HHS, there's quite a bit of furniture that they wanted to keep, uh, so we need to have a place to store that until we can get them up onto the fourth floor. So, and they're working very nicely with us. Uh, yeah, all, 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 all entities are working well together and things, things are progressing smoothly, so. Yeah, couldn't ask for a better group. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our minutes, our six, minutes approval for the April eighth meeting. So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. The consent agenda, the following item will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or public request, uh, that a specific item be considered separately.
Second.
Second.
This is a resolution, roll call please.
Brand.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the lowest responsible bid in the amount of ninety-five thousand one hundred and ten dollars and thirty-five cents received from Iowa Illinois Office Solutions LLC DBA Paragon Interiors. You see the rapid's Iowa for the furnishing setup and installation of furniture for Phase A of the Pine, Pinecrest Renovation Project located at fourteen oh seven Independence Avenue be approved with the chair be authorized to sign. Uh, the contract contingent upon receipt of the certificate of insurance is recommended by Rory Givney.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, so all four bids were reviewed, uh, by our outsourced architects and, uh, as you know, uh, the, the, the low two bids were very close, within six, almost seventeen hundred dollars of each other. Uh, looking at the office solutions, uh, talking with our architects, the experience that they have, uh, they felt that they were very qualified to perform this work for us, so, uh, that is our recommendation to go with the office solutions.
Uh, I had a question on, on really all of those bids is, do we have any idea of how many of those products are made in America? Recognizing the tariffs, um, I know they're, maybe they're pushed back a week, maybe it's two weeks, maybe it's whenever, but, um, those prices do trickle down. Were the products specified with, you know, the.
Yeah.
Place of origin specified in the, in those bids?
I believe Maggie might be on line, I'm gonna have her speak for that. Maggie? Um, so for the, uh, for the VA Center, uh, that was paid for out of, uh, um, not the ARPA funds, but the lost revenue bucket. Um, we did put, uh, uh, buy American preference on there, so there's, there's buy America and then there's domestic preference, I think is how it's called. Um, so it was, it was identified as domestic preference.
Correct.
Um, so they're supposed to take all efforts to try to find, uh, products that are made in the US. Um, if they can't, then, uh, then, then they'll have to go elsewhere. Uh, so that's what was stated in the RFP. Um, I can't tell you exactly what the, what brand that we're looking at yet, um, but.
Or to show how specifically smacked that out in the bid, but.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I don't have the brand name, I, I just can't tell you that offhand. I can certainly get that information for you.
Hey Rory, with the RFPs, if they can't find, uh, American made or domestic, do they have to show justification?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Schwartz. Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Brand.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight B, resolution to change order number two received from Young Plumbing and Heating Company for the jail BAS control, uh, upgrade and kitchen HVAC approval project in the amount of two thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars for paint, uh, for painting the kitchen walls be approved and the chair be directed to sign as recommended by Rory Givney. Something is directed.
Second.
Motion. Second.
Yeah, this is, uh, once we got, got into the kitchen, started removing appliances and really opening that space up, it became pretty apparent that, uh, it could use a paint job, so that's what this is.
You have any, your budget that comes from your budget or?
Um, pardon me.
Your budget?
Uh, it's coming out of the contingency that was factored in for the project. Yep.
Alright, this is a resolution, roll call.
Leyland.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Brand.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item ten, uh, ten A, discussion possible board action for all aspects of the FY twenty-six Blackhawk County budget.
I don't really have pretty much prepared materials. I redistributed what we got last week, I did add, there was a conversation about reducing one position, so I did buy reports of that. That's all I.
So you weren't planning to go over any of these with us?
Do you want me to like hand?
No, I know, I just.
I don't want to keep repeating that.
Yeah.
I remember it's like you said, after you made the proposal for the insurance.
Yeah, so I thought, I thought I was gonna put this up here, so. Yeah. Previously, the published budget is the bottom section post adjustments of March fourth. Then April fourth is what I showed how things would change with a small reduction in the healthcare premium, absorbing most, if not all, but most of the excess performance of the fund in fiscal twenty-four. We had a good year in twenty-four, we had fewer large claims. You know, you never know that that's going to be, so I'm, I think all of us that work with the plan are very reluctant to do anything more than this. Our consultants for fiscal twenty-five recommended no change in the premium. We don't have the final official renewal for twenty-six yet. Uh, but that's why, at, with a lot of discussion and study, we were comfortable recommending the five percent premium reduction that goes back to the twenty-four rates, or yeah, twenty-four. So, yeah, then let's also ask what would reducing one position do? And that is the section at the very top here. So you can see that, I should back up a little bit. If we do the health insurance cost, the premium reduction, that would bring residential urban property owner to a three point two four percent increase, rural residential to a two point six one percent increase and other varying rates. If you also reduce the budget by one position, that would bring, bring an urban residential increase to two point nine one percent. The residential rural stays about the same at two point six one percent and you can see the other varying rates on there.
Thank you. I just get that, I didn't remember looking and hadn't looked yesterday when I had done an email to everyone. I used that four percent stuck in my head.
Yeah, I, I was using that because that's when our collections were rising and I wasn't, so I was thinking about our total tax collections rather than how much the taxes for one individual would rise. That's the difference, yep.
Thank you. So when she's talking about the last one, I know we all talked about it last week or I just kind of proposed it at that time and really didn't get down into any details or anything, just kind of thinking that rather than adding a position, since we weren't taking away any positions or removing any, you know, but maybe to not go ahead and add one, even though we allowed the chief deputy position to be created and be, um, just kind of absorbed in what they currently had as employment numbers. And so I went back, especially after Justin, you made the comment about the hundred and forty thousand dollar reduction we thought that maybe Nate had made, and I wasn't sure at that time, so I just asked Michelle to, please look up the numbers and, and make sure that I was accurate and what I was looking at too. So, um, that being said, the information for the most part, I don't know if I need to refer to anything, the amount that he did adjust his budget was forty thousand dollars. The eighty-eight thousand that was in there, um, as Michelle noted in her numbers, but also was helpful to me because I didn't remember it, was the, um, insurance that had taken care of that vehicle amount, so it didn't need to be included in the budget. So, um, for the most part, I guess I was just looking at the fact that when we were just looking for reductions to the budget and if there were any things that we could look at and knowing we'd never, the sheriff's office, I, I had in the first email that we'd never probably been full employment at the sheriff's office with a hundred and forty people. But, um, I took the never out because I just thought for years I knew we haven't been and even come close. It's usually been that nine to ten positions sometimes and I can remember the sheriff being very pleased a few years ago saying, you know, that he returned so much money to us for the, in the general fund because they hadn't done that. But in fact, that's why it was that way, because of vacancies. So, um, I thought, not seeing that that would create a hardship on the budget, on the staff, on the, on the county, um, community, as a community from a public safety standpoint and reducing out that, just wanted the board to have a little more information in case that was a, would be something you'd like to consider. And, um, I hope, if I didn't provide that there, it was either to ask Michelle or me or some questions, if you have, um, any questions about it, to see what your thoughts are on that and thank you for putting that together, because at the time I wrote it, we didn't have any idea how it was gonna impact it and what it would move or if it would be impacted, so. A little bit, it still puts us down, I guess, and looking at that urban residential is always where we kind of have that benchmark. I think that for most, you look at that and the others fall in place, but they're still very important. But that's a benchmark for us, I know every year that where are you and what are the increases? And that's a, a segment that we look at, so. That to be at less than three, I thought was, is a nice place for us to be.
Yeah, I agree.
But.
Yeah, as long as it's. So yeah, so if there, it would decrease his tax askings, um, as long as he has the ability to, to cover what he needs to.
Yeah, oh, definitely, that, yeah, I thought that was, that's why one of my questions to her was to, if we were ever to get in that situation where you were at full, full employment and had every position full and wished we had, had added a position, I just thought maybe to take a year or two to evaluate whether he needs another one. But, um, also to, if he did, we do have reserves, we would use it as that and so recognized by this board, then we'd be the ones being asked to, to be here this next, you know, cycle. So that was really all, just to get more information.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle, for pulling those numbers together too. So apparently I did not recollect that accurately, I thought it was a hundred and forty thousand, so I don't know.
Wow. It's a, it's a price number.
A lot of number.
Yeah, it is, I mean, we did make changes.
I didn't remember.
We moved forty to the rural fund. We didn't really cut it a little completely, but we did reallocate it to be paid for rural instead of urban. Plus the vehicles, I don't think we ever talked about the fact that we were actually covering them another way. So that's why you had, you had the best information we had given you at the time, so.
And there were a lot of numbers, I didn't remember much of it either, so that's why I said, hey, show me the numbers if I'm not right.
I go to sleep, say binary code.
Yeah, I know, which budget, what numbers?
Lennon, my concern with taking that one position down is the conversations that we've had with the courts and needing more security of the building here and what we're gonna do with security, um, bring it in-house or continually. I don't want to end up shortening Nate's position.
I don't want to end up shorting Nate a position either. My thought was, knowing that there was still monies available from the savings from the health insurance, is maybe taking a hundred thousand that's left of that instead of taking that position. I know that's kind of, what Michelle's given us is a recommendation. I haven't seen any of the proposals yet from actuaries or anything with the health insurance, but right now, knowing where, what I've heard in claims, uh, I don't want to take all of it, but I would think maybe we can squeeze another hundred thousand out of that savings instead of taking that position.
Even if we did that, I'd still propose this, or I mean, I'd like to see this done only because we're adding a position. You know, we didn't, we didn't, we actually let Nate create the position he wanted as a new sheriff and deciding how we wanted to restructure his staff. And so when he became sheriff in January, we allowed him to use the twenty five budget for that, without really any discussion of needing additional deputies or any others. So when I first started looking, it was just like, maybe we needed to look and evaluate that of where we are with staffing in his department, especially when it's a hundred and forty people, the largest and most costly department, obviously, that we have for a reason, but um.
Yeah, my concern is if we need to add a person then for the security here at the building.
Well, I I assumed it was ten. You don't think it would come from those ten? I'm just asking.
I don't know.
We still have that, uh, what do we call that? What do we call that million dollar staffing fund?
Turnover?
A turnover, a vacancy.
Vacancy, vacancy thing.
Vacancy fund, right, so this would maybe squeeze that a little bit, um.
If he needs it, if it get to that point where we say, yeah, we are gonna do that and we need to do it, that's what, like I said, we still have reserves for that, so we don't want to short anyone.
That, in in my, in my short time here, that department's never been fully staffed.
No, in my lo- my longer time, it's not.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, I, I love the term reduction of one position, it really is.
It's not really a reduction, it's just not creating, that was kind of what caught my eye when she did the hearing, and it was just like, oh, we really never discussed that.
It's not a reduction, it's correct.
Do we really want to create positions, is this the year to do it? And maybe it's one to evaluate, um, any department, but it just turned out that was one, Brian's was a net. And it has turned out it wasn't a creation either, and so I thought maybe that we just net this for now too, that was out of my head.
To what the number one forty, that's what they're authorized to have right now for personnel?
Uh, I double check.
Yeah, one forty or one forty one, I don't remember.
Well, so as the twenty five budget, they're authorized at one forty, was added.
Added, this would take it to one forty one.
That you didn't necessarily take specific action on that.
Yeah.
That's what I said, he was able to do with the vacancy part of his budget to have the chief deputy and that was with my.
Even at one forty, he still had vacancies.
He had, yeah, and he said nine or ten even last week, so I just thought, yeah, it's still. So my issue that I bring up at least is a little different than your issue, if you still wanted to do it, but that's, I I still see the maintaining the employment level for us being something that we can do this year.
So if we look at changing security here in the building, then he ends up needing, well, if he's fully staffed, I guess that comes back to the point then too. If we need to add a position back, in that case, but.
I I guess my preference, Rich, is to not tax people, based on the maybe we'll do this later.
Yeah.
I I'd rather work off the numbers that we know of what we've got now. We feel like we can manage that department at a hundred and forty without taking it to one forty one, we can absorb the work. If there is vacancies, we've still got, we've got room there, keeping it at one forty, to me that feels um, feels like we're sort of rightsizing that tax. And then if three months from now, four months from now, five months from now, we we come to a decision of how we want to move forward with jailhouse security, we do have reserves, if we needed to make an adjustment, if it was, if it was so tight, we also have the million dollar fund that does have, that does provide us some wiggle there as well. We're not so locked in on this thing that we can't do anything for the next year. It just means that we're not gonna tax folks for what we might be.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
With that, not knowing, yeah, just that.
This was Chris, I would just add, um, if the, if the concern is wanting to see this uh for uh for security personnel, um, there is, there's been no action taken to guarantee that's not what this position is being added for, and so um, this wouldn't really cover that unless we took specific action to say that.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got some steps to.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a couple, couple steps there on the, on security.
Yeah, no, I'm everybody's comments, I guess I, it was just throw it out as a possibility and a way to help reduce taxes.
Yeah, I'm.
Minor.
I'm good with that, as so long as he's gonna have what he needs, when he needs it, so we can ensure that this place is secure.
Sure.
You know, as long as there's no pushback at that time, I guess that's what I would expect.
I think the funding of it was gonna be our issue as far as that three fifty cap, or maybe I'm incorrect in that, right, Michelle, but we have to look at just what money.
Already, we already have a problem with security.
Uh, but the amount, but it's finding a solution.
Yeah, we're not.
But not pushback from the three fifty cap.
No, we're not, to continue what we're doing today even.
So, that being said, I I I certainly can make a motion to do it, but it's like, I don't want everybody to have an opportunity to think. I just, I knew we were closing in when I looked at it too, that Monday's our hearing, so it was really almost like the last opportunity that we're gonna do something, change of anything that may be today, so that's why I threw it out yesterday.
I'm sorry, was that a motion?
I will, well, I'll make, I just, it's nobody, yeah, I just have more to say, but I can make the motion then, that we um not increase um the position, one additional position in sheriff's department at this point in time.
To maintain a two FY twenty five staff level?
Yeah, yes.
Do we have a second on the motion to maintain an FY twenty five staff levels?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Can I ask a question?
We have room for discussion, yeah, we have room.
Certification, but, so sheriff's elected official.
Yes.
As as such, it's determined it's on staff, I I understand this motion to be to reduce the funding for this position, is that correct?
Was, yes, was the, was the funding was put in, correct, Michelle?
Yeah, exactly, I just wanted to make sure this was about the funding.
Yes, not to reduce out the position.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, just to reduce the funding for an increased position.
Alright, didn't want to be a bother, but we've had that issue come up in the past.
No. Well, I want to be shared, yeah, that's, thank you, Mike.
You have any other discussion on this, as long as we can take a vote? Alright, I hear nothing else. Well, let's do a roll call on it.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Kurtinback?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Let's do it.
Okay, and I want to say, I'm sorry, but that top section didn't have the right rate. Rural taxes, I couldn't really change, it's because they did change by a dollar, but that is a two point four three percent reduction instead of the two point six one.
Two point what, sorry?
Four three.
Two point four three percent. And it should be five hundred and forty nine dollars for the FY twenty six taxes, which is an increase of fourteen.
New form.
Yeah.
amended form of law, right?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry about that, I don't have enough time to think that through. Somehow when you look at them on the board, they look.
Yeah, it's not to look the same too, so.
I was earlier, so.
Ask me to look further, count it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Very good. Do we have any other discussion on the uh FY twenty six budget?
Can I just, I just want to say something. Uh, in reference to our salaries, not that I don't agree with it, um, I hate to go on a left field with this stuff, but I just seen uh some upheaval in the community over it. I realized that we're probably not gonna see eye to eye with a lot of people on that, uh, being in the position, but I felt that it was at least worth bringing up uh to maybe reconsider the ten percent for us. All things considered, um, I think we're worth it, but at the same time, uh, there's I think enough people out there who just have such a problem with it too right now that uh maybe it's worth stepping back on that a little bit. So I would almost, I would, I guess I would like to be open to considering like five instead of the ten, which which probably still gets some blowback from people, uh, but I don't know, five I think sounds, people will perceive five a little bit better. And then, I'll just say a little bit further, as I told Rich before, you know, understanding like the amount of time that some of you guys are able to put in here every week too, um, there's some people just don't care, you know, you can put sixty hours a week in and they're gonna see it as a part-time position regardless. But yeah, so, I I understand what goes on behind closed doors, um, and I appreciate what you guys do, who are able to put that much time in. Uh, but it's just something I just want to throw out there in in terms of, I guess, satisfying that segment of the population um, who come twenty twenty six, that might be a deal breaker for some of us. Looking at what's going on at the state level, so, that's all I have to say on that.
I I appreciate your comments, though, like I said, to get that, those types of things in hard times and people looking at things and recognizing that, yeah, kind of an upheaval and even across the country, now, not just here, but, yeah.
Also recognize the states have had to do some rightsizing on their salaries as well, state legislation, government office, other elected officials, um, yeah. It really is unfortunate that we have to take action on our own salaries, it's kind of frustrating, but the comp board system didn't work either, um, at least, at least we went into our discussions with real data, thanks again to Amanda for putting all that together, trying to create comps. Speaking for myself, when I, when I voted in support of uh of the salaries at all level, it was, it was based on the policy, based on an intent to get closer to that ninety percent of where we had stated we wanted to be, um, and uh yet last week, Michelle went through, what, twenty thousand dollars uh equates to, which is um basically the same bill over just taxes, um, that, I I get optics, um, but I think optically I'm, I want to be seen doing the 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 sound policy piece.
Right.
Um, sometimes folks might disagree with it, but I think if we go and have the conversation, if we have to have a conversation with folks of why time is justified, um, and how we came to those numbers based off of comps in the market, that, you know, uh, ultimately, I'm comfortable whatever we we get to, but um, I do recognize the work that staff put in to make the recommendations, recognize the work that all of us do, uh, whether it's in this building, out of this building, at home at three o'clock in the morning. Um, uh, you know, there's a, it's, yeah.
Yeah, I I don't, and I don't disagree, all things considered, it's it's just more or less, and I did a posting on Facebook uh this morning, uh illustrating the stuff uh from Amanda's PowerPoint, just to put it out there for transparency, so that people could see the data behind the decision. And I know it's still, I'm not silly enough to expect that that's going to be enough to turn people's opinion on that, but just want people to know that, okay, this is being responsive to uh their concerns, uh even though they're seen as whatever, so.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, I know the first vote, you know, for the max levy was kind of just gonna be the highest point anyway.
Yep.
I know then that was kind of made us look probably divided, which is why I brought up, I said it was like, your vote is your vote, but it was just like, I wanted more discussion and us being very sure of our positions and things in it, to even ask that, and if we had wanted to have more discussion, then, you know, I thought that was appropriate, but it, I I did feel very good that we all felt very good about the position and the justification with Amanda's supporting information and that we had done several things to make us last in on this.
Including a zero percent a couple of years ago, right?
Yes, definitely, that, and then we had kind of held ours, um, previous two to a very low number, even intentionally two, so. Now, I think I, I feel good that I think we're getting to where we wanted to be in the, in um position with others out in the state as well as others with our elected officials, but then our increases going forward will not be those sizes, so I know that's hard for people to still understand.
Right. Yeah, here's the frustrating part for me. So we had legislators put us in a group with two other counties to be, put us in districts when we're all gonna be up for election here in twenty six. Those other counties, Story County, their supervisors are making ninety seven thousand a year. Johnson Counties, their supervisors are making ninety six thousand a year, we're at forty four thousand. So there comes a point for a rural county or urban county, I mean, there comes a point where you have to, if you want quality people in here to do these jobs, you gotta be able to compensate as well. We're, as serving as supervisors, no different than we expected doing the job for the county in any one of these positions. And I don't believe in governing on the backs of workers, but I also don't believe governing on the backs of the electors either. So if a ten percent is knee jerk to you, the zero percent should have been knee jerk to you as well. When I look at the averages, even at this ten percent, we're at a three point five over the last ten years. So, uh, that's, that's well within the realm, so. At this point, I'm fine with the ten percent, uh, knowing where we're at with the budget overall, uh, and knowing that there's probably more increase, and I look at Benton County, the supervisors there are making fifty one thousand a year. We're underneath Benton County, and that's an all rural county. So there comes a point where reality steps in, you want people here to do the jobs for the people, you be able to compensate for that job they're doing as well. Yeah, I I don't disagree with anything that you said, it's somebody, a couple of different people made made that point to me over the last week too, uh, this is why you don't get certain people to run, because it doesn't make financial sense for them, not that nobody's doing it for the money. I don't believe that one bit, but at some time, I mean, at some point, you have to consider, is it worth the time that that's invested, so, I could go back and work in the field and make as much in a week than I can here in a month, so, it ain't for the money, folks.
Alright, any other discussion on the FY twenty six budget? Alright, here we go, yeah, uh, as a reminder, we're meeting at ten AM on the, our meeting for the budget, our special session for the budget is ten AM, we do have a nine AM meeting uh on Monday as well to talk about the evidence in ten buildings. Um, item ten B, discussion possible board action for FY twenty six Community Service Funding Plan. I just wanted to sort of start a conversation here, um, I think it would be great if we could have word out to agencies by uh July one, we have a pretty tight timeline in order to achieve that. I think we probably need to have some discussion of.
No, when you say word, you mean something posted so they could apply, make applications, or do you mean?
I I would love for us to have an award by July one.
Okay.
Um, right, entities that are, even that's pretty late when they're looking at, it is really late, um, when they're looking at crafting their budgets, they're effectively gonna have to hand someone a request and just pray that they were to get it, but, um, you know, if we were to look at a July one fund, um, or at least letting them know, that really puts us sort of May one to have the application up for thirty days. Um, I I had a question on, so if there is, a. Um, I, I had a question on, so if there is agreement that we could open up applications May one, I think that's a start, and then I think there's probably a discussion of how many presentations we, we need, um, I know part of that depends on if we get thirty five requests, um, presentations become a lot harder, um. I'll admit, I think it's probably sometimes nice for folks to feel like, you know, they're presenting, I would prefer to see applications with the specificity that we don't need a presentation. Other entities that I'm a part of that do grants or, or any other funding, um, sort of external or governmental funding, there's not a presentation per se, there is an application process, we apply, and then based on the merits of that application, um. So, I mean, it's sort of a, I guess, just for, this is the discussion part, right, is, is how much, um, how much do we wanna have to keep those presentations, how specific do we want to make the requirements, um, of the, uh, of the application themselves?
I'd like to see some words more emphasis on entities that haven't received money from us in the past. Okay?
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, we had, um, Mike went to a lot of work, I think, really, on to determine for us what was met the public purpose um, categories that we have to hit now in Rob Sand Directive, you know, that they have to be services, they can't be capital kind of items, and that, so that type of a refresher might be good for us, but I thought, when he, when you made that long list, I think at the time, some of us felt that you were kinda giving us here the categories are, pick what you want, or are these your categories, instead, we just kinda left the long list. I thought whether we wanna do that, you know, or reduce the list, or we wanna have other criteria, like you said, if you've received awards every year for several years, maybe you give others a chance, I think those are some of the, the questions that we do wanna think about in the criteria we talked about. I know we also said something about a scoring, there, I know I, this has been a while, but when we looked at what other counties were doing, some of them were having obviously other committees kind of look and make recommendations to the board, some were doing the board, each got a score sheet and scored how you wanted, turned it in, and then the winners of that came, I, I kinda liked that, that was kind of a good of everybody having input and, yeah, you know, selecting, um, how you'd like it, uh, the funding to go, but, yeah, it just seemed like when we talked about even what we wanted to do, looking at the criteria again and how we wanted to go forward, we probably need more discussion, and you haven't probably even seen the application now, or what the application looks like, and some of those types of things, that would be helpful, and if you wanted to change or not change, I don't know, but. But I thought our forum was simple, it worked a while, we get that created, and it seemed like everybody responded fairly quickly and was able to get something in, when you talked about not last minute.
Yeah.
They were, even when we did have last minute timelines, um, 'cause before, we always did the conversations and the budget presentations were made during, I mean, budget cycle for whatever they were doing, and then we made that decision, and then it was forwarded into July.
Yeah.
But we can change that if that's not what everybody wants, so the July date's probably doable, saying May to have it on there might be a, since.
A stretch.
Might be a bit, just because where, where we're at now.
More refined, yeah.
And we need another meeting or two, or a mu- meeting at least to say, hey, how about this, or whatever, unless you had something to build it.
The only thing to do away with presentations in general, the only, the, one benefit, which I, I think makes sense when looking at general application processes for funding, uh, the only thing that I would miss out on, I think, is just being ignorant to what's, things are going on out there that I might not have any idea otherwise, or, so, yeah, do you see a value in that?
And we have had some new ones.
Yeah.
Before, we had the same ones apply all the time, and it was just the same handful, now, we've been getting some new ones that some of us had never heard of, so I know.
Well, maybe our request to them is brevity.
Yeah.
Um, right, maybe it's not ten minute presentations, but I, I, I prefer a little shorter than ten, um, 'cause you get, you get ten of them in ten minutes, that becomes, you know, that ninth or tenth, I don't wanna shortchange folks, and I wanna encourage folks to be succinct with their messaging.
Yeah.
And I wanna, I'd really like to make sure on, on the backside, once we make the awards, if we had a bit more specificity in the application process of the intent and how they're going to use the dollars, that becomes a lot easier for, for Mike and Michelle to craft an agreement, um.
Yeah, that's been a couple of years.
And that's, that's where, uh, if it's okay, I'll give you a very quick refresher right now, just remember, we don't, we don't make donations. These people, we, we're just citing services that are needed or beneficial to the county, and which of these, uh, which of these agencies or which of these applicants, they don't need to be non-profit, which of these, which of these applicants provide those services for, you know, where we think that we're getting a good bang for a buck, uh, state law prohibits making donations, and I think, um, several years ago, that was kind of the trend, not only here, but in many counties, was to make money available as a, almost like a donation, and as it turns out, Auditor's Office gave a, the State Auditor's Office gave an interpretation that, in fact, donations are not permitted, and so when I, when I crafted it, they said it's gotta be for public purposes, I crafted a li- fairly lengthy list, just as examples, and said, the board needs to determine what public purposes, you know, what our public purposes are, what public purposes are important for Black Hawk County, and I said, some examples could include, and I made a list.
Of twenty one.
Yeah, several, I was gonna say, and it, um, and, and those were, you know, just things I thought of, things I saw other counties doing, uh, and as it turned out, or listed out to the whole list, uh, so, it's, it might, it might be less too to figure out which of those are the most important as well, so.
Yeah, we could do that, couldn't we, Mike, too, or Board, we could do that where you change it every year if you wanted to, and look at specific categories, maybe want to target or not, I'm just not saying, it could be a suggestion that this year, we'd like to focus on, I don't know, we got job training, or special needs training and assistance, or health and mental care, something like that, if that was what we wanted to be, that specific for those needs or not.
So it's just, by alliance, no donations, these have to be payments for services.
This is Chris, what I'm, uh, proposing is, you know, let's, let's tweak the form a little bit to get a little bit more detailed information, but, um, you know, I, I write a lot of grants too, and it's true, you don't, um, do presentations, uh, for, for most groups, but I think that since these are public dollars, I do like the presentation part, but, you know, we could limit it to, you know, a six-minute presentation, and it can be, um, just the ones that, you know, any, any five of us, if there is a group that we're more interested in having, uh, present, then, then we can make that request, but if we have thirty five applicants, we don't have to have, you know, everybody present, just the ones that we, we do wanna hear more from.
Sure. I know game, they do a lot of the interviewing, that there's, and Metro Funders groups do too, they go out and meet, they don't have them come present, and they can do the Q and A and see what they're talking about, what they're proposing, but maybe you could make it more selective.
I think, I think we could, I like the idea of giving, gonna be extra consideration to applicants who haven't applied before, I don't know if I love the idea of excluding those who have. Right, and so, I, I think, if we did, if we could come up with a rubric, right, of public, there, there are specific use and how it fits public purpose, and we individually grade on a scale of one to ten, and then compile, you know, that public, how it fits public purpose, how it fits a public need, so, for instance, if, if any of us feel homelessness, for instance, is a, is a more, you know, a, a higher need, it, it does become difficult, right, for us to make determinations, but, um, but then we start to compile all of those, and you could do, so that you're not necessarily penalizing even extra credit for new, uh, new proposals, new applicants, or even a new use, there might have been some folks who've applied for one, at one, one purpose at one point, and now they're coming back to us with, uh, a refined.
Yeah, and wasn't, I didn't mean it to be exclusive, but you say, if you've done it five years, and then somebody else has it, you know, that weighs in, but if we do score sheets of some type too, then almost objectively, I mean, or.
Starts to get in.
You're starting to think about it yourself individually, you know.
And if we compile them all, compile our scores, average them out, that does help, sort of.
Yeah. Inclusive, right, inclusive, yeah.
Yeah.
I know some counties did do that, I think, like, if you've done it for three years, then they ask them to miss a year or something, and then come back in, so that was where that came from. So we wanna do another work session?
Maybe, yeah, maybe another work session, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
I was just gonna say, I would propose, um, you know, next week's agendas will be kind of tight to do this, but if two weeks from now we have this on a work session, uh, with possible action, that gives us all time to take a look at the current application, decide what parts we wanna beef up on, and I also think that, I personally think it's okay if we moved to an August first, um, goal, um, there are a lot of grant cycles that just happen all throughout the year, and you don't know at the beginning of the fiscal year whether you're gonna have it, and so, um, I do agree with the, the goal of trying to keep it close to the beginning of the fiscal year, but I don't think we need to have it right, I think if we're within a month of that, I think we're in a pretty good spot for people.
Well, good point.
So.
We're going, we're just getting on a budget cycle.
So looking at the meeting of the twenty ninth, um,
Yeah.
for a work session, possible action.
Get some samples of the application and some, and the SANS Directive and all that kinda stuff.
Where is the application?
We've got, uh, it's, it's online, I'm not sure if it's, it's probably not active at the moment, is what I'm guessing, so you don't like it, so that people aren't applying.
Sure.
I, we could probably send it out.
Yeah, I was gonna say to that, yeah, that, if you don't, like I said, the Rob Sand Directive is helpful, just so we remind it what we do.
Send it out, what I had sent you in June.
Yeah.
It'd be great for the evaluation, too.
I think we sent a list, or someone sent a list of some of those that we had funded, I don't, just to see that, how we've kind of composed that before, any of that kinda.
Okay.
Alright, uh, item eleven, I need reports or information from the Board.
This is Chris, I'll just, uh, you know, I was in Washington DC, um, uh, last, uh, Thursday, uh, came back home with a, a nasty cold, but that's okay. Uh, but I did meet, um, with a lot of different staff members in, um, Hints and, or Hinson and Ernst and Grassley's office, and those relayed, uh, concerns about, um, uh, federal support for everything from public health, um, to potential layoffs federally at the VA office, uh, to the need for, uh, more federal bridge funding, uh, especially in the state of Iowa, um, as well as, uh, water conservation and flood resiliency measures that have currently been cut, and so, had a lot of good conversations, um, and we'll keep following up on those.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So I've been continuing like township meetings, last night I was at Washington Township, uh, meeting, getting meetings from wonderful folks out there taking care of our rural areas. Yesterday, just kinda touch on this, we're gonna have a discussion next week, but I spent probably a half hour, forty five minutes following up on an election that happened in Black Hawk County back on November fifth, nineteen fifty eight, where the citizens of Black Hawk County voted, uh, from, Black Hawk County having seven supervisors at the time in districts, down to five at large. And, uh, went to the library and got a copy of the courier for the results, and it was very interesting, uh, one of the people was heading up the study for that happening, was Robert Buckmaster from KWWL years ago, and, uh, I am just gonna read this into the record, so it's, Buckmaster declared that the seven-member man board gives an unfor- representation because seventy percent of the residents of the county are represented by only two of the seven supervisors, while the other thirty percent are represented by five. The Reappointment Commission feels that the five-man board will more adequately provide fair and equitable representation for both city and rural areas of the county and supporters we've agreed, uh, and this is when we went to at-large for our supervisors, so. We have been both ways, and both ways trying to help, uh, promote the folks in rural area, and, uh, we're back in the seesaw. So we'll have more discussion next meeting.
Yeah.
Very good, and if anyone wants you to adjourn?
Uh-huh.
Second, all people say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good day.